It's 10:14. If we had four more council members, we could start the meeting. Mr. Wax, Mr. Holden, Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Walters, Ferraro. Mr. Walton is here. I can't get that. He snuck in. Okay, we've answered that. We still need three more for a quorum. Mr. Pacheco is here. We'll have to get him close. Two more. Mr. Wax, Mr. Holden, Mr. Ridley Thomas. I only need one of you, but I need one of you. All right. We now have a quorum and therefore this is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council, our first meeting of the new fiscal year, July 5th, 2000. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Bernson, Chick, Fuehrer, Glenn, Turgot, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padiavlin, Thomas, Hornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, ten members present in the quorum, Madam President.
And hallelujah for that. This being the first meeting of the month, let me first announce that we meet on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, 10 o'clock, more or less, that we are available on Channel 35, the city's cable channel. We are also available by council phone. And this being the first meeting of the month, we will start with the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Pacheco, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Without objection, the minutes are approved. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And without objection, no one would dare. Without objection, those are approved.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items to continue. Item number nine, council member Pacheco requests that be continued to Friday, July 7th.
Is there any objection to continuing item number nine? Seeing none, that is continued.
Item number 40 has been requested to continue to Friday, July 7th.
I'm sure there's no problem with that. We'll continue that till Friday.
And also, item number 46, there's a request to continue to July 7th.
Any problem with that? Seeing none, that's continued.
The city attorney has advised that several of the closed session items should be continued. 51B, a request to continue to July 12th.
Okay. Looks like there are two more on there.
And 56C, continue to July 14th.
51C.
51C.
Right, okay.
And 51D, also to continue to July 12th.
All right, those will be continued.
Next item, Madam President, there's a confirmation of city official. Item number 28, confirmation of Melissa Applebaum to the Quality and Productivity Commission.
Ms. Applebaum, are you here? I guess not. Well, all right. Item number 28 is before us. Do we need a motion on this? Would anybody like to make a motion on item number 28? Mrs. Chick, it's your committee. Shall we assume that you're moving approval?
Yes, I am moving approval. And the appointee had let us know the time she came to committee that she would be unable to be in full counsel today. But she's a very energetic young woman and very eager to serve the city and very good at bringing diverse groups together. I think her skills will play out well for us. So I move approval.
Anybody else hearing none, open the roll on item 28. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Ms. Applebaum is approved. Moving right along forthwith on that. Thank you.
Next items, items noticed for public hearings, items one through three. Item one has an ordinance. Do you wish to hold that for 12 members?
I believe we'll have to. And item three has a couple of cards, so let's call. Well, yeah, we have, all right, we have two people who wish to be heard on item three. So we'll open the public hearing and hear first from Kai Chan and then Louise Wexler.
Hello, Honorable Councillors. My name is Kai Chan. I'm the representative for the applicant of this project. And I'd mention that this project was approved by the planning department with a condition that the garage be placed inside the front to the back. And that means the whole redesign, the whole project. And also, we feel the condition is not justified because HPOZ's own has nothing to do with whether the garage in the front or in the back. It had to do with the design and compatibility of the house with the rest of the neighborhood. And one of the main reason why the project was placed with this condition was because of the neighbor's opposition. And this opposition came from the past history of animosity between the owner and the neighbors. Because several years ago, the owner has paved the rear half of the lot with a parking lot to serve the apartment facing the Worship Boulevard and without a permit. So that's a mistake by the owner. And subsequently, the city required the owner to place a concrete block wall, the whole width of the rear property line, so that that was never been used anymore as a parking lot. Since the owner realized that he cannot change the zoning, so he decided to build a single-family home. And we feel that this past history should not be the reason why this case be placed with this condition and due to the animosity between the owners and the neighbors. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chan.
Thank you.
Louise Wexler.
Good morning. I'm Louise Wexler, president of the Carthay Circle Homeowners Association and a member of the HPOZ Board of the Carthay Circle. We are here, we are pleased that residents will be put on that property, as it has been vacant since the original home was destroyed a number of years ago. We are asking that the garages be put in the rear, as most of the homes on that street have them. And we also want the single vehicle with driveway. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing. Mr. Fuehrer is not here. Ms. Miskowski.
Thank you, Madam President. The Planning and Land Use Management Committee heard this case. We also had testimony from the council district councilman Fuehrer's office. And we were supportive of rejecting the appeal by the applicant and sustaining the director of planning determination for the certificate of appropriateness consistent with the HPOZ local community and council, which basically allows a house to be built on this single-family lot, but requires it to be in conformance with what the HPOZ district created. And that is the garage to the rear with a single driveway. And that is consistent. And there were very, very few inconsistencies in the neighborhood. And there was no reason to consider anything other than that for this particular lot. And that's what we recommended.
Mrs. Walters.
I just wanted to ask Ms. Miskowski or staff, what about the size of the house? I'm very familiar with the neighborhood. And it sounds to me like this is going to be considerably larger than most of the homes.
Lot, it's a 3,000, 3,300 square foot home, two stories, 29 feet high. The local committee, which dealt with the appropriateness, felt it was not inconsistent, except for the broad expanse on the front. And if they took the garage and pushed it back, it would be consistent. And that would be, that's the recommendation.
All right.
Okay. The item is before us. Open the roll on item three. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. And now that we have 12 members, well, let's go back and do items one and two. Any council members have anything to say about items one and two? Seeing none, open the roll. Do we need to do them separately, or can we do the vote at once? All right, open the roll on items one and two. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items four through 27.
All right. We do not have any cards on any of those items. Are there any specials, members, items four through 27? Sorry?
12.
Mr. Padilla calls 12 special. Anybody else?
21.
Mr. Hernandez calls 21 special. Anybody else? Going once, going twice?
On behalf of Mr. Holden, item 19.
Okay, Mr. Holden through Mr. Hernandez calls. We'll get to that, back to that in a second. Hold on. 21, 12, and 19. All right. With the exception of those, open the roll on.
Hold it just a second.
Hold on, hold on.
Did you call 20 and 22?
No, I didn't yet, but I will.
Thank you.
All right.
Sorry.
Anybody else? Okay. Open the roll on items four through 27, with the exception of nine, which was continued, 12 was called special, 19, 20, 21, and 22 were called special. And 18 is called special. That's what happens when you.
Special?
You want, you want to call item 11 special?
Well, what I really want to do, 11, is continue it till Friday, so that we can get some update from the school district.
Okay, let's do that first. Is there any problem with continuing? Anybody object to continuing item 11 until Friday? All right, item 11 is continued. Let's try one more time. Open the roll on everything that's left. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes. Those are approved. Fourth with on item 15 and 16, please.
You want to do all those forthwith? All right, do them all forthwith. Live dangerously. Okay, next item.
Next item, items for which public hearings have not been held, items 29 through 50.
All right, we have no cards on any of those. Does anybody in the public want to speak on any of those items? If so, move fast. Seeing none, the public hearings are closed. And members of the council, do we have any specials, items 29 through 50? Okay, item 45 is called special by, for Mr. Ridley Thomas, by Mr. Ridley Thomas. Anybody else? Mr. Bernson, did you want to take up 40 now, or you want to leave it? We're going to continue that. Okay, that's fine. 41, for an amendment. That's fine. Anybody else? Any more specials? Items 29 through 50.
Madam Chair, could I offer the amendment on 41?
Yeah, let's see that.
Now, and we don't have to call it special.
Good idea. Okay, what's the amendment?
To change the language in the second paragraph, the last four lines, beginning thereafter, it should read as follows, thereafter, beginning with the month of September 2000, as opposed to July, and ending with the month of June 2001, draw the demands in the amount of 6,179 payable to Clarence Chance, and in the amount of 1,231 payable to Settlement Fund LLC.
Okay, have we got that?
Yes, she has the language.
Well, I know you have it as well, so.
Right.
We're all right here. All right. So we'll then open the roll on items 29 through 50, with the exception of 40, which we continued, and 45, which was called special, and 41 has been amended. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. How many of those would you like forthwith? 41, 42, I think that's it. Okay, next item. Next item, Madam President, item number 12, called special by council member Padilla. Mr. Padilla, could you push the? Thank you.
There you go. Thank you. I'll keep my comments brief. I just wanted to call this item special and hope that the record reflect that we do request a report back. I did not see that written into the language as a committee report. But colleagues, generally what this is, we've had several discussions over the last couple of weeks about street resurfacing and sidewalk repair and all those basic city services that we hear so much about. And having worked with our Street Services Bureau of the Department of Public Works, it's come to our attention that we produce our own asphalt here in the city of Los Angeles, and we save money by doing so. But the capacity of these asphalt plants are less than what the city's needs are. And if there was a significant investment in the two facilities, we could not only produce as much as the city needs, so that we don't have to go out into private market and buy more asphalt, but also possibly have it be a revenue generator for the city of Los Angeles. And to begin with, we can look at the Department of Airports and the harbor and the other proprietary departments and the work that they need. And so that's what this motion that I introduced was about. The committee report in Public Works was a good one. And I just wanted to make sure there's a reporting back to the committee incorporated into what we're adopting here today, so that we can continue to monitor the developments. Thank you.
Thank you. That was one of our recycling achievements, actually, which could go further. All right, anybody else? Open the roll on item 12. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on 47, by the way, I forgot to mention that earlier. Okay, next item.
Item number 18, called special by council member Walters.
Mrs. Walters, could you push the speaker button, please?
Yes, thank you. You need me to push?
Yes, please. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Council members, Madam President, council members, item 18 has to do with the acceptance of grants from what the federal government calls the Weed and Seed Program, but which we changed to CPR program, Community Projects for Restoration. In the body of the motion, it says that, talks about the funds are designated to provide law enforcement with resources such as overtime for personnel, the purchasing of mobile substations and equipment. This purchasing of mobile substations and equipment has been in the language every year since those grants have, since we've been receiving those grants. And I don't remember when we first started, whether it was '93, '94, somewhere around in there. And they brought some substations, I raised this question before, the second year, because they brought substations the first year. Well, the second year was supposed to be for those stations in the catchment area that they hadn't purchased them for. But these funds have a defined catchment area, and I want to know how many substations, mobile substations, are we purchasing?
Well, let's see if we can find out. We got anybody here who can tell us?
You know, in regards to that specific, I don't have that answer. But I know that when we had a committee meeting, those issues were discussed. Part of it, there was an expansion, I think, into the Pacoima area, but that was more on some of the program dollars. And then LAPD was present. But I don't remember us discussing actual purchasing of a mobile station at that committee meeting.
Yeah, well, it's.
And this meeting was held a couple of months ago.
It's here in the motion, and I'm sure you will recall that every year, the same language.
Right.
Comes back. So how many times are we going to buy mobile substations?
Do you want to hold it over till Friday and have somebody get in here and answer the question?
Sure, okay.
All right. We'll continue item 18 until Friday. Now, item 19 was called special for Mr. Holden. He's not here. If he is, nobody's found him yet. So let's just open the roll on item 19. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that one. Item 20, Ms. Goldberg called special. And, and, yes.
Yes, my question really goes to the sources of funding for this. In letter A under one, it takes money from the reserve fund to the unappropriated balance. In B, it takes money from the reserve fund also to the unappropriated balance. So that's about 1.02 million dollars. And then in C, it takes money from the reserve fund. Now, are these reserve funds that we put aside for this purpose, or are we just taking money out of the reserve fund and then, if they knew they were applying for this grant? Well, I just need to know what the funding is coming from. Is all of this grant money that was put in the reserve fund for this?
These were, I think, all advances with grants that were coming. But inasmuch as we asked it, the other justice grant was continued to Friday, I think this would be one that.
Okay, it's just funding. I have no problem with the program. I'm just trying to find out what the source of the funding is to it.
It's basically just to put the money up front and down, so the positions can be kept well with the.
Okay, and is it 100% reimbursement?
Yes.
It is. So if it's 100% reimbursement.
We're just advancing and the money's.
This is just advantage, and I have no problem with it.
Okay.
We can go ahead. We don't need to put it off till Friday at all. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Splendid. Open the roll on item 20. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Okay, item 21, Mr. Holden's here. You call, that wasn't yours? Yes, it was. That was yours, Mike, right?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, I'd like to continue item 21 till Friday, so that someone from the mayor's office and criminal justice could be present. Just to kind of give a perspective of why I'm asking the question, is, I think that maybe we should be looking at some of these grants as to what role they're playing with the alley bridges program in coordinating resources, for example, the probation department and so forth. And so, Mr. Thompson, who can't be here today, so I'd ask that we continue this till Friday, so that we can try and get that perspective.
Okay, is there any problem with that? That's continued till Friday. Item 22, called special by Ms. Goldberg. Same question?
Actually, it is.
Okay.
In this situation here, it talks about transferring 55,000 in number two from the reserve fund to the unappropriated balance. And I guess I'm wondering, since we just finished the budget, and we knew we were going to do teams, I don't understand why it has to come from the reserve fund. Why wasn't it set aside in the budget? I mean, we put so much money aside for the police department for a variety of things. My concern just is, is that we keep robbing this reserve fund, and we can't do that endlessly. And it isn't like these are unanticipated expenses. That's my concern, really. So if this is an advance, I have no problem with it. If it's not an advance, I want to know why we didn't, nobody could have failed to know we were going to do this.
Okay, this one, we perhaps failed to know it well enough. This is teams two, this is the important thing that the Department of Justice said, we've delayed for far too long. We have fast-tracked now teams two with special positions, special authorization for authorities. The possibility of advancing, of being reimbursed, the federal government has said that they, once we get teams two up, they will reimburse us and help us build it. But this is the effort that we went, we went with a special contract to get it and just pick this. These are the officers and the staff that we need in the police department to manage this specifically under an expedited fashion. And it wasn't known at the time we were doing the budget, because we were still fiddling around with teams two, if you want to be honest, and not expediting it the way we should. So this is the expedited process with these authorities.
So then, the 54A that's attached. So, then, the 54A that's attached to the file on 22, which calls for $200,000 for a consulting firm, is that included in this vote today?
I think we already did that.
Okay, so that was already done. That was, okay, that was adopted June 13th. So, today, so that came from the reserve also. Unappropriated balance, reserve for economic uncertainties. See, I have to tell you that the police department has an enormous budget. I'd actually like to hold this till Friday and actually ask the department to come and talk to us about this, because it seems to me, with a budget the size of the police department's budget, this is the highest possible priority. And maybe they could choose $55,000 less of something else that isn't their highest possible priority, to do something that is their highest possible priority. It seems to me not to make any sense to continuously take it from the reserve fund when we knew we had to do this, when this was scheduled all along, and it should have been in their budget, and it should have been their first priority in their budget, and they should be coming to us for $55,000 for something way down low on the totem pole of their priorities, which we could then decide as a policy was important enough to go into the reserve or not for. This way, what they do is they put a gun to our heads, you should pardon the expression, and I don't think that's an appropriate way to make these allocations. So, I'd like to hold this till Friday and ask the department to come forward.
Can I make a suggestion that we act on number 1, which is grant the authority for the positions, so they can be filled and used?
Absolutely.
And then separate item 2, which is the transfer.
Absolutely, I have no problem with that at all.
Okay, so, the motion is to approve item 1--
Right.
And hold item 2 until Friday.
And hold item 2. And ask the department to come and to look at reprioritizing $55,000 from somewhere else into this. Thank you.
Okay, Cindy, I know you pushed the button, but is that what, all right. Mr. Burnson is next.
Well, I think everything's been answered. I just want to quote one thing, Jackie, you may want to be interested in this. When Zev was here and Chair of Finance, we'd get these motions in right after the, you know, there's a million motions that come in, that go to committee and then come back after, after the budget's been approved. And he would always ask the department heads this question, was this one of your requests when you brought the budget to the mayor, and was it one of your top priorities? Okay? And if it wasn't, at that time, forget it. And that's the way it was. But Cindy answered the question that this is something that's required, and I think that we do need to, what your question was, where do we find the money? Does it come out of the reserve, or does it come out of their budget? And I'm willing to defer that part of it.
Mrs. Chig.
Yes, just so the department knows in advance, when they come back on Friday, a question I would like to have answered is, have we accepted this grant money from the federal government quite some time ago, and if so, have we been earning interest on it, and if so, what the interest amount is? Thank you, that's--
Not controlled yet.
All right, I think the item is now before us, but we're continuing item 2, so this is 22, item 1. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That's approved. Forthwith on that one. Next item.
Item 48, called special by Councilmember Ridley Thomas.
What happened to 48?
I'm sorry, item number 45.
45. Mr. Ridley Thomas, could you push the speaker button, please? Thank you.
As you request, Madam President. This is a matter of increasing concern. Recently, having received a call from the Chief of Police indicating that there is an unusually high number of homicides taking place, they are attempting to analyze it. We know it to some extent by what we read in the newspapers. A range of homicides are taking place. We don't know about all of them, because they are not all reported in the press, but I should say that certainly enough have been. And to the extent that that is the case, I wanted to highlight the point that a request is being made by Mr. Savornich to look at issues of deployment. But I think it's useful for us to have a view of what is currently going on, particularly in view of the fact that it is being seen as alarming. And Ms. Zakowski, I don't know if there's any intent to have this in public safety in any time near term, but certainly, as we sit on the Ad-Hoc Committee on Gang Violence and Juvenile Justice, this would be a matter that I would request to come before our attention as well. But finally, it should be appreciated that we oughtn't haste to any conclusions as to what the character of these homicides might be, because they regrettably differ. And to the extent that that is the case, I think it would be useful for us to know what the profile looks like and what we are really dealing with, and develop the appropriate course of action, Madam President.
So, let me just be clear on what it is that you're asking that we do with this item. You do want to approve it, right?
Yes, I make no--
Just make sure that those issues are included in the--
Right, and that such a report be made available before the Ad-Hoc Committee on Gang Violence and Juvenile Justice, as well as public safety. Was that your intent, Mr. Savornich? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holden.
I just want to congratulate Mr. Savornich for introducing the motion, highlighting the fact that there is a turnaround, that crime is on the way up in Los Angeles. I think that's, might be given to the mindset of some of the criminals, criminal elements, that Rampart freed them to do whatever they choose to other people. Could be. And it almost going to find it necessary for somebody to get tough again and send a message out there, and I think the motion is specifically saying that, that we will not be accepted, we will not be tolerated, and it will be put down when it's observed. I look at the furthermore, the further moves, that LAPD examines their deployment formula to ensure that it is the most effectively, that is most effectively meeting the public safety needs of the residents of Los Angeles, and set forth any necessary revisions that may aid the department's efforts to overcome the recent increase in violence and overall crime in various communities throughout Los Angeles. I think you're saying, take the police officers from behind the desk, including senior lead officers, and let the chief deploy them where is necessary. It just, it seemed like to me, if you vote for this, you're saying that to the police chief, you know how to solve the crime problem in our community, and you better get about doing it, even if it means putting senior lead officers on the street where they are trained to fight crime. Because they're not going to arrest anybody in anybody's living room. And that's the same speech I gave you before, when you talked about, tell the police chief where to put the senior lead officer. You guys can't have it both ways. If you're going to vote for this unanimously, you're going to say to the chief, you're in charge, commission, you're in charge, and we're instructing you to do just that. Be in charge and fight crime. Do I read this correctly?
Thank you.
Okay, then I'll vote no, you don't intend to do this at all.
Mr. Burnson.
Well, I don't think Mr. Savornich intended this as senior lead officers, but let me tell you something, that the four senior lead officers that we lost in Devonshire resulted in the loss of about 3,000 volunteers in Neighborhood Watch, which had a huge impact on crime in our area. And so, I just want to throw that in, because Mr. Holden made that comment. First of all, I'm not going to support this, Rudy, and I'll tell you why, okay? First of all, I believe the chief and the commission are responsible for deployment. You know, there are certain areas of the city that already feel they're under-deployed, because it goes to other portions of the city, but I don't want to get into that. You know, we really have no authority here whatsoever. As of today, we are a legislative body. That's all we are, folks. Hate to remind you, the charter took care of that. So, we can request the chief, I'd be interested in hearing what the chief has to say about it, or if he wants to talk to us about it, that's fine. But we're not in a position to order him to do anything. I want to remind you of that. And I have confidence that he'll do the right thing, and I have confidence that our civilian review police commission will do what's necessary also. Thank you.
Mr. Savornich.
One would think that after a weekend of vacation, that common sense would prevail. Boy, was I mistaken. Couple of things. One, the intent of the motion was not meant as articulated by the fine councilman of the 10th District, or the 12th District, to have anything to do with the deployment of senior lead officers. But I do make this comment in all sincerity in regards to seeing crime go up in certain portions of the city, go up dramatically, in that this council member observes that with the absence of the senior lead officers, and this council yet to be briefed in regards to the entity that took the place of the crash units because of the Rampart scandal, I do believe there is a void in our neighborhoods right now in regards to the interaction between the police department and civilians, especially civilian volunteers, that over the course of many years worked in partnership with the police department in order to combat crime. This council member has yet to be briefed, and I'm, and I'd be interested to hear whether or not other council members have been briefed in regards to the entity that supposedly replaced crash, in regards to fighting some of the, in fact, fighting all of the problems with gang activity in the City of Los Angeles. In the wake of the Rampart debacle, crash units were disbanded in every division in the City of Los Angeles, and a new entity was to take its place. I don't know what that new entity is as of yet. I don't know if either of my colleagues know what that entity is as of yet and how they are operating. But what I do know is that in certain portions of the city, in fact, in almost half of the police divisions in this city, crime has gone up, especially as it relates to violent crime, and has gone up dramatically. And I think it would be most appropriate, whether or not we are an administrative body, an executive body, or as of last Saturday, a legislative body. I believe it is fully the intent of this council to continue to be the advocates of taxpayers across the City of Los Angeles. And I believe it continues to be one of our duties to ask questions, especially in this case, when it comes to the safety of our constituents. And so, I believe it is most appropriate to request that the chief report to the Public Safety Committee in regards to what our actions are in regards to fighting this increase in crime, and perhaps, Councilwoman Zakowski, perhaps a report to your Public Safety Committee in regards to the entity that was supposed to replace crash also be part of this report. So, with that, Madam President, I ask for an "I" vote, and for my colleagues to just take in stride the comments of the two representatives that spoke previously.
Well, we have three more yet to come. Ms. Goldberg.
Well, I'm going to probably vote for this motion, but I don't think it'll have much practical effect, because the reality is, is that the commission and the chief have the authority to decide deployment regardless of the views of the council. But I don't think it does any harm to tell them what our views are, and that's why I'm going to support the motion. I don't know whether my area is one of the areas where it's gone up or not, but I do know that there are areas that are definitely being hard-hit. And that those areas that are being hard-hit, we do need to reflect to the commission and to the chief, the concern of the entire council, whether it's in our districts or not, it's in our city, and that we need to have attention paid to those areas and right away, because we are in a summer, and a long, hot summer, and we want to make sure that we can have deployment reflect the changes in what has happened in the increase in major crimes. Now, even if that means less deployment in areas I represent, because at least two of the three divisions I'm in, I don't doubt very highly whether they're having an increase. But I know that wherever it happens, it has a negative effect on all of us who live in Los Angeles, even if it isn't in our own neighborhoods. So, I'm going to support this, although I don't think it will have much material effect for a variety of reasons. I do not think it does any harm, because I think it's always useful for the council to let the commission and the chief know what our understanding is of what's happening in our neighborhoods and our streets, and our desire to have deployment reflect a changing situation for major crimes.
Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, members of the council, I kind of rise to share a few words of caution. And as the motion reads, it states service statistics, for example, that crime increased in the Harbor Division 32%, in the Northeast Division 24%, in the Rampart Division 20%, and citywide, about 9%. What it didn't state is that at the Central Bureau, crime increased, for example, gang-related crime increased 40%. Now, what I want to caution you about is that the 40% represents, for example, and I'm looking at a chart here, from four to eight incidents versus in Rampart, from 42 to 66. So, when you use percentages, you got to be careful, and I wanted to give you that caution. Another chart that I'm, another chart that I'm looking at talks about the cost per capita. And so, for example, it says the Central Bureau, it costs about $1,131 per capita versus Rampart's $190, versus Southwest's $310, versus Harbor's $252, versus Southeast's $401. So, when you talk about additional resources, what are we talking about? And so, I think it's important that we follow the maker of the motion's lead to allow the chief to come and make a presentation. There's no question that crime has gone up in the last couple of months, especially in the area of aggravated assaults and rapes and homicides, crimes against people, violent crimes. But again, we're a complicated city with 18 divisions. In some areas, the distance that has to be traveled to address crime is tremendous, in other areas, it's not, but the density's tremendous, and so the likelihood of crime is greater. And so, to me, I want to follow the lead of the maker of the motion, but I didn't want to mislead the public, because right now, we're looking at certain statistics individually, and the reality is, we have to have a more comprehensive approach to it.
Okay, Ms. Zakowski.
Thank you, Madam President. For those who have asked for a report from the chief on the disbanding of crash and the new units, the special enforcement units, we did have a hearing in Public Safety Committee that will be coming to council in the very near future, talking about what they have reinstated in the special enforcement units, how they are bringing people in, some of them, about 40% of the officers now serving in these special enforcement units were former crash members. But we will have that report probably next week to council, and have the chief come and present it. But I think that this follows up on a motion earlier, and that is the question, is there an increase in gang activity, or is the increase in crime that we're seeing unrelated to gang activity? And that was the preliminary report that we had in Public Safety Committee, but I think there's some tough questions that the council wants to ask in terms of how those, what is the indicator, how are they certain of that, how do they know that? And I think that that will be coming, and this motion dovetails with that. So, that matter will be coming to council probably within the next week.
Mrs. Chig.
Yes, I would just like to ask when that report comes forward. That's the report, Councilmember Zakowski, that was in Public Safety Committee last week. I think it would be, would us to also ask Delphia Jones to, either in writing or in person, update us on the incidents and the increase of graffiti, and whether it's gang graffiti citywide. I have heard anecdotally and informally from her that it has increased, and I think that that, along with other gang-related crimes, is something that we all need to be concerned about in terms of denigrating the quality of life in our communities. I also wanted to remind all of us that as we look at these percentage-type figures, to remember that we're working our way down from a grotesquely high number of horrific violent crimes, and that in terms of our tolerance level of what's acceptable, you know, when, when law enforcement or anyone else comes and touts the decrease in crime, and you look at what we're touting, and so we're down to 500 and some odd-- you look at what we're touting, and so we're down to 500 and some odd murders instead of 550, I don't think that's cause to celebrate. And any, anything except going down is not acceptable. But we, quite frankly, I think we need to be pushing in a steeper decline than we've even had before. I just don't see what we're celebrating when we have a couple of few less human beings murdered or women raped or a variety of other violent assaults. So when I read that homicides are up this half of the year, 27.78 percent, I wouldn't be happy if I heard they were down 5 percent. That's not enough. Also, and this is not a rhetorical question, I don't know if it's the city attorney or who to answer me, but with our new charter in place as of Saturday, and I think this is our first council meeting under the new charter, and the fact that the council has its role further delineated as the legislative body, what kinds of directions can we give either the chief of police or any other general manager in terms of changing the approaches? You know, we're contemplating this in Public Safety. Mr. Zivornich, I'm very appreciative of the motion that talks about these things, but I would like some clarification in terms of what the council, in fact, can direct and what we can't direct. And who, is it the council or is it the mayor? We all in the city need to be looking for direction on this.
Okay. Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, I would just simply hope that we are not defined by resignation in light of the fact that there is a new dispensation, namely a charter that in some way redefines the role of the mayor, the role of the council, the role of various departments, et cetera. It seems to me that any such declaration is premature. And if we can't see ourselves making a request, even going further than that should the situation warranted, of any general manager irrespective of what department he or she may be leading, then I think we are making a huge mistake. We can, we should, and I would say that we ought to defy anyone who would attempt to cause us not to do that. After all, we remain duly constituted, we remain officially elected to serve our respective constituencies and the city at large. And there is no suitable democratically structured entity in the City of Los Angeles that appropriately replaces us. And I trust that we will maintain that kind of consciousness as we continue to do our work, even under a new charter.
Mr. Holden for the second time.
I agree with Mr. Thomas. If you say you don't have any influence about what happens in government, step aside. You're here voting today. It's a cop-out to your constituents to say, "I can't do this today because July 1st came." It's the same as the mayor saying before July 1st, he didn't have any power. It's a perception. If you know the rules, you're in control. You just work within the rules. You got a new set of rules. And I tell you, I get along very well with the general manager, department heads, and I get my district served. But if they didn't do that, I get a chance to review their rating. I will. All right, then what we'll do, we'll have 15, we'll have, that's why I came out against the charter. I came out against the charter reform. But I can tell you this, we'll have 15 votes here, at least my vote, would say that I'm not happy with the general manager. I'm not happy with the mayor's direction that he gives to the general managers that relates to giving, biasing the services, one district is opposed to another. People thought by having reform that they would not be taken out of the process, but you can clearly see now they've been removed from the process. It's a rude awakening. The LA Times and many of you came aboard to ask for charter reform. Sure, we needed some reform, but by God, we didn't destroy what we had already resolved to be good. So I can tell you that, no, this is a bad deal, but I'm, one vote would say I'm displeased with any general manager, department head, and even the mayor, if he's not responsible for the people, not just my district but the entire city in terms of providing uniformed service throughout the city. Now, I can tell you that there are some news conferences already being called, and Mark can tell you about this, in his district and in mine, regarding rise of crime and what the mayor's gonna do about it, what the police chief's gonna do about it, and what we are going to do about it. Well, the fact that matters, they better get off the dime, they better get a kick in their walk, skip along, because I'm gonna go after them, and bring about some meaningful changes here to resolve this rising crime problem. But on the other hand, what can you really do when a stepson shoots his stepfather in an argument? I mean, that's just a problem in our society, a young man come home to visit his mother and he kills her. That raises those statistics as well. I mean, gang-related, we can make some inroads there by providing jobs and job opportunities and suppressing gangs with some tough law enforcement. But these violent crimes within their homes and relatives against relatives.
Mr. Holden.
Oh, I went seven seconds over.
Yeah, you did. Nine, 10, 11. Mr. Wax.
I just thought since this was the first day of the new charter that the people voted on, we might try to give it a chance to work.
And I'd like to point out that I'm the mayor this week.
All right.
Mr. Burnson.
Let the charter work then. Mr. Wax, do you still wish for the charter to work? To work?
Hold on. Mr. Burnson.
I only rose to explain, answer Laura's questions about what can we, you know, what can we do? And I don't think we should abdicate our, you know, our ability to serve our constituents. We just have to point out that the charter changes things. Essentially, what is wrong with the motion is that we direct. I don't think we can direct anymore. We can request. We do have one alternative, Laura, and that's called the budget. It's called money. And if you don't get satisfaction, you have the ability to cut off money to any department as well as the mayor, by the way. So it's been done before. I pointed out to Mr. Holden that many, many years ago, when Mayor Yordi was having a confrontation with the city council, the city council made a point. They closed his office, removed his staff, and took his car for 72 hours, okay? That may be, Joel, I don't know. But anyway, I think they made their point. So we do have, we do have the power of the purse strings. But I don't think we have the power to direct or order anybody to do anything anymore, unfortunately. But our office is acting the same. We're still taking calls and taking, going directly to the departments from our constituents as we've been doing for 21 years. Nobody is saying call the mayor's office. You know, I understand that there have been thoughts about that, but I don't think any of us are doing that because we are here because we want to serve our communities. But anyway, at any rate, we have the ability. I think we should change, if Rudy doesn't mind, I'll support the motion. I think we should request rather than direct, okay? Okay, well, we can still amend it. Are you willing to amend it? I'll request.
Let me just point out that because the police commission governs the department, whatever it says in the agenda, we've always requested.
Okay, well, with the spirit of that, with the spirit of that, I'll support the motion. And, but we do have remedies. We haven't given up everything and we still have the ability to govern in some sense where dollars are concerned.
Mrs. Chik for the second time.
After chairing the ad hoc committee on charter implementation for a year, colleagues, I do understand the changes very clearly. And the point I wanted made, and I will ask our city attorney to state it for us, well, actually Ruth, you just did and I don't need to have it repeated, that it's the police commission appointed by the mayor that makes these decisions and we communicate our requests to them. I also would like to make a formal motion and ask for a second so that it's communicated to the head of Operation Clean Sweep, Ms. Jones, that we would like her to report on the state of graffiti when we hear from Chief Parks. Thank you.
All right. The only question I have about that, and somebody will tell me before we vote on it, is whether we can do that, city attorney, since it's not noticed. Can we just add that into the?
Yes, because it's part of the topic that you've been discussing.
All right. So, Mr. Zivornich, are you, except that's now incorporated by the maker of the motion. Mr. Ridley-Thomas for the third time. Or the second time. It says the third time on here, but I don't believe it. Yeah, it is. Aren't you glad you called this special?
Yes, I am. I was gonna, I was gonna invoke the Yordi rule, Madam.
Never mind. All right. Item 45, as amended, is now before us. Open the roll and close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. All right. Now, could we have forthwith on items four and six, please? And the next item, Mr. Pacheco for a motion.
Madam President, colleagues, I ask that we reconsider our motion that we approved on last Friday regarding the permits at Terminal Annex II in the L.A. airports.
All right. I just want to make sure, I can't, was, yeah, was that, did we do that in a special meeting or was that part of the regular meeting?
I think that was part of the regular meeting.
Okay. Just want to make sure. We voted in open session. Mr. Pacheco was on the prevailing side. He is entitled to make this motion. Mr. Wax seconds the motion. Mr. Merkin, did you wish to say something before we vote?
No, not at this point.
All right. I guess we're gonna hear about it. Go ahead.
Simply, Mr., for everyone, specifically Mr. Holden, we are still in the middle of understanding exactly what's going on between the Terminal Annex, I mean, the terminal and the employees and employers. And exactly on this Friday, we expect to get a more clear update as to what's going on. And I wanted to make sure that we got those commitments that were made, that were distributed, were actually kept. So I'm not sure if you got your copy, Mr. Holden, but it should be in front of you from Aviation Safeguards.
Oh, I'm sure, I don't have it yet.
Okay.
But then my question would.
Wait, 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 hold on. Did you want to speak on the motion?
I'm gonna ask him a question.
Wait, wait, you want to speak on the motion to reconsider? Is that?
Well, just say, just say I'm speaking on the motion because I just want to ask him, of course, make a comment. Now, you are the drafter of the charter. How does this, is it different now from three days ago today in terms of what we're able to do with this motion and the Prop 5? I think that's what you want to get into. Is that correct?
It's not a Prop 5.
Okay, well, tell me, do we have less influence today?
No, it's the same.
Same? All right, so nothing has changed? No cop-outs?
No, no cop-outs.
Okay. Ms. Goldberg on the question of whether to reconsider. All right. Okay, open the roll on whether to reconsider. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is reconsidered and the matter is now before us. Ms. Goldberg, or do we need a report from Mr. Merkin first?
Well, my understanding is, is that the commission has not been able to meet because under the new charter, it takes four for a quorum instead of three for a quorum in a five-person commission, isn't that right?
No.
No, it's a seven-person.
It's gonna be a seven-person commission because they've added one from.
Right. And one of them has been, one of the vacancies has received a nomination. I'm not sure the other one has yet.
Okay. In any case, where we are is, colleagues, is that we are exactly where we were before and I would just urge that we vote as we did last time, which is to.
Approve the permits.
Approve the permits, but not send it forward.
Not send it forward.
Leave it in council and give everybody till Friday because the letter that was sent out only calls for hiring of up to 15 people because that's all that there are vacancies left. So that still doesn't deal with the 100 other people that have already lost their jobs. So as they attempt to work out arrangements, I think we just should just leave this in council and let them know that we're waiting to see how it goes. So I would move that we adopt the report that we did last Friday, which is to approve the permits but to not send it out of council, leave it on the table in council.
Okay. Mr. Merkin, is that?
That's fine.
Okay.
That's right.
All right. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right. That is approved.
That's right.
Okay. Very efficiently done. Next item.
This is the time for comments from the public on non-agenda items.
All right. We have just one card today. Mr. Robinson.
Madam President, Members of Council. Madam Honorable President, Members of Council. King James VII of Scotland is King James I of England. He commissioned a panel of Hebrew scholars, Aramaic, to translate this book into Latin, which was translated into English by the martyr Tyndall. The King James Version of the Torah and the New Testament. God does not hear, you know, God does not have ears so we can talk him after death. Jesus is God in the spirit, uh, God in the flesh. Excuse me. Pardon my Freudian slip here again. But the only point I'm trying to make is that as a creationist who considers himself, let's admit it, New Age, I think it's time that we stop jiving God and ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. That closes the public comment period. I believe the remaining items are all closed-session items.
Yes, Madam President. Do you wish to clear the desk before going in?
Let's do that and while we're at it, let's, well, go ahead.
Motions for posting and referral?
Without objection, those who approve.
That clears the desk for closed session.
Well, that was quick. All right. We have three items on closed session and another three that were continued. So those of you who are not involved in the closed session, if you would please depart. Are we back? All right. We have item 51A before us. I've already forgotten who made the motion.
Item number 51A, Ms. Missakowski. And it's in the case of Lyman Financial Investors versus City of L.A. in the amount of $230,000.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, one no.
That is approved. I think that one has to go forthwith. Okay.
That clears the desk, Madam President.
Do we have any adjourning motions besides mine? Let me start by asking that we adjourn in memory of Harold Nicholas, who was one of the all-time great tap dancers.
Nicholas Brothers, right.
Of the Nicholas Brothers, yes, indeed.
I'd like to be second on that.
All right. We may all want to be on that. These guys were just wonderful.
They were fantastic.
Yeah. Can you do it? I can't either.
I can see it in my head.
Ms. Goldberg.
Yes. That's as close as I get. I have two today, actually. The first one is the father of a dear friend of mine passed away in June. He was born, his name is Luther Beck. He was born in August 24, 1917, in Childress, Texas. He passed away in Paradise, California. He was an evangelist for the Church of Christ for 30 years, managed the Cameron Park Mobile Home Estate in Cameron Park for 20 years. He is survived by his loving wife of 81 years, Molly Beck. Four sons, Lee Beck with his wife Marlene, Thomas Beck, Kenneth Beck and wife Bernadine, and Leslie Beck and wife. and Leslie Beck and wife Deborah. He had nine grandchildren, nine great-grandchildren, six brothers and two sisters, and was quite a guy, and will be sorely missed by his family and all of his friends. The other one is Andy Dunivan and his daughter Leah Rose Dunivan. Were both killed in a car crash in Texas on June 18th. Andy grew up in Echo Park. His father still lives there. They were the husband and daughter of Nina Dunivan, who worked for the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce in the early 1990s, and it was a real tragic car accident, and lost both her husband and her daughter. And so I ask that we close in their memory as well.
Mr. Hernandez.
Madam President, I ask that we adjourn in name of Daniel Padilla. He passed away on July 3rd. He was a victim of a stroke. His son David is a good friend of mine, and he was 67 years old. Leaves his wife, as well as three sons and a daughter.
Mr. Holden.
I was going to ask, and I will now, join you, and adjourning in memory of Harold Nicholas. He was the youngest of the famous Nicholas Brothers, who brought the gymnastic style of tap to Hollywood musicals like "Pai Pai," like "Bird Kids," "Million," "Sun Valley Serenade," and "Stormy Weather." He died at the age of 79. He was scheduled to be honored at the John Anson Ford Theater Saturday, but stayed in hospital after a heart operation. Harold was married for a short time to actress Dorothy Dandridge, and he survived by his wife, Rigmore Newman, made live his son, brother Fayard. Tony Nicholas is his nephew. He works for the city, and will be heading up a social service center in my district. And Denise Nicholas is also related to him as well, probably an uncle of hers. So he's going to be missed by family and friends, of course.
And fans.
And the many that he entertained.
Mr. Padilla?
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of a longtime friend and neighbor of our family, Mr. Martin Saavedra, who was our neighbor across the street for many, many years. He's survived by his wife, many daughters and sons and grandkids. He had a big heart.
Second. Council is adjourned. See you on Friday at 10 o'clock.